Okay. Is this working? Okay, it is working. I have to get used to talking into the microphone. Can people on Zoom hear us if someone wants to like put it in the chat or?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you, Sue.
You're very welcome.
All right. So, hi, everyone. This, welcome to ASMSU City Council Debate. We're gonna kind of just go through some student issues. We have questions that we're gonna ask each of the candidates. This first debate is going to be for the two-year candidates. So we have Ron Bacon and Mikey Manuel. The basic setup, they're gonna have two minutes for their opening statements. They'll have a minute and a half each to answer each question. And like at the end, they'll have one minute for a closing statement. And for anyone that doesn't know, local election is gonna be November 2nd. So we do have voter registration forms. He's holding them up right there. So if you are not registered to vote in the city of East Lansing, you should register to vote and you can vote in less than a month in this local election. And unless anyone has like general questions, I guess we can probably get into it. Anyone? All right. Let me just get a timer up really quickly. Maybe. And I flipped a coin and so Ron Bacon is gonna go first. And that was just, it was just a randomized thing, so. All right. So you have two minutes for an opening statement.
Hello, nice to meet you all. My name is Ron Bacon. I am currently seated on the East Lansing City Council. I was appointed last summer on replacement of a couple of departing council persons. I've lived in the region, East Lansing for about ten years here locally. Spend some of my time working with high school kids, football coach, sitting on a couple of boards and commissions here locally, as well as just being a dad to some high school kids. My issues, some of my top issues, I'm really interested in the areas around housing, attainable and access to housing, in particular entry points and how to get more families and young professionals living in East Lansing. Secondly, to that, interested in having much better regional partnerships, particularly with Michigan State and across Grand River. I think according to most people's perception, we have one of the better partnerships right now that the city of East Lansing's had in partnership with Michigan State, and I think it could be better and deepen. Particularly the COVID pandemic presented a lot of opportunities to cooperate and to be good partners. And we really wanna grow that partnership. And last but not least, my background, I'm in the public sector. So I'm really attuned to redundancies and things along that line from the private sector, I mean. And I always wanna reduce redundancies and code and zoning and things like that to make it more simple to live, to build, and to be in East Lansing and kinda simplifying life around that. I think also in that regional partnership, a big part of that's gonna be enhancing the relationship between the students and the neighborhoods. And that's always something that comes up. It's probably one of the top things that we receive emails or messages around is that relationship. And I think we've done quite a bit. And I'll visit that through these questions as we go forward on how we've been working to enhance those relationships.
Perfect. All right. And Mikey, if you wanna go?
Hello? Okay, thanks. Thank you guys for coming and thank you everybody who helped put this on tonight. I get asked almost every single day, why am I in for City Council? And I can give you a new answer almost every single day. What I'm gonna do for my intro is just give you some of my top reasons why I'm doing this right now. One, it's a nonpartisan position, which I really enjoy because I don't feel like I'm running as a politician, but as a small business owner and somebody who lives in this city and who likes to contribute to the city. So the opportunity I have in front of me is to be a platform for other small business owners and to give my input as a small business owner and where we can help out in areas downtown East Lansing and all around the city. To go off on that, not just a platform for small business owners, but a platform for anybody in the city who wants to get their voice heard. As politicians, we're elected by people to do exactly that, to give them a platform and run it as a democracy. So information comes in and we make the best decisions we can to help everybody out. Three is three resignations in the last year. It's borderline embarrassing for the city. And right now, I think it's a really a really good opportunity for people like me and Mr. Bacon to step up and stick around and say, we're gonna see our positions all the way through. I don't care about the excuses or whatever reasons. Oh, you're okay. And four, this is kinda cliche, but I really do believe in the idea of being part of the change you wanna see, especially in your community. So for me, I wanna be a part of this new generation of of students coming into the workforce and say, not voting for your local candidates based on sole party alone for taking opportunities to vote for candidates on both sides of the party. And like I said, this is nonpartisan position. I really look forward to that aspect of it. But just being a part of a new change that a whole new generation can start putting forward in their local communities as well.
All right. And then we'll kinda just like go back and forth. So you can answer the first question, the next one, you'll answer the question first. So these are questions, they're mostly student issue-based questions. So the first one, should the city plan include strategies to retain students after graduation? And how would you plan to do that? So you have a minute and a half.
Yeah, I think this is a really good question. I think working with young people in general and then college students, I think you're the biggest asset to the region. And I mean that more, the longer we can retain you, the more opportunity we have to tap into probably your most creative in creative times and your most creative years. When I look at the career pipeline, I'm also always considering entrepreneurship and people kinda building their own thing. And I think the longer you're, that we're able to retain you in the region more broadly than just East Lansing, I think that creates the opportunity for the next great thing to occur here versus somewhere else. I consider every one of these students kinda burgeoning with ideas. Not every single person's gonna take a traditional career path. And I'd like to see those things incubate and take place here in East Lansing and in the region at large. I, I think what's gonna need to happen, I think as we enhance our regional partnerships, the townships, the capital, East Lansing and Michigan State, it has the potential to be a much more powerful entity and economic driver even than it is currently when working together and in conjunction. I think there's room for that. I think there's an appetite for that at this point. And I think with the right people cooperating and working together, I think it's time. I know in the past, there was challenges just determining who's gonna get credit, which end of Michigan Avenue is gonna be on, what side of Grand River is it gonna be on? I think unfortunate pandemic change or fortunate pandemic change. Let's go.
Yeah, absolutely. The working pipeline, as it were, is kinda broken. The demands you guys have coming out of college, some of these companies want a bachelor's degree and ten years' experience right away. So it's your job to take the best opportunities you can going ahead, but it's our job to give you some of those opportunities right here. And I've already floated some ideas around with local business owners to win or lose the selection. I think we're gonna go through with this, opening up a sort of convention for small businesses in the area that will hire students right out of MSU, or students currently at MSU. And we can get the ball rolling to that immediately. So the more opportunities we can provide for you guys to stick around, the better for everybody, the better for our economy, the better for our growth, the stronger we'll all be as a city.
If you wanna keep the mic, you'll go first this time. We'll just go back and forth for you guys. All right. And then the next question is, there have been many opportunities and events to have students experience downtown this year. However, projects such as like Elba Alfresco were taken down before students were able to come back to campus. How do you see projects such as this one and others in the future, including more student participation and getting students involved in the downtown economy?
That's a good question. And one of the main key factors here is community input to see what not only the students want, but what the residents who live around that area want. I would like to see some harder data on if there was increases in business to those local areas. And let's assuming that there were, because students were downtown, I would like to even go further with it. When I was growing up around here, parking was free after 5:00 PM. And for sure, our businesses downtown are losing money because when people go out to dinner, they don't wanna pay for parking. So so many different ideas we can put forth to making sure that the students are downtown and those areas, those empty buildings downtown East Lansing get filled by letting students and residents from inside and outside the city come in, park downtown for free and enjoy our community.
Yeah, Alberto Fresco and the other placemaking opportunities are, is kind of a huge opportunity. Technically, really born out of the pandemic once again and the challenges of being indoors and trying to be creative. Adam Cummins and his team are just superstars and some of the most creative people and soon-to-be award-winning people in this area of placemaking. My goal, it would be to open earlier in the spring this year and continue into football season. That was my goal last year as well. There are lots of logistical considerations and challenges that must be met before you can keep it open longer. But I think that's, we have the time and the ramp now to work towards working out some of those logistics, be it overtime for staff, be it law enforcement, the evenings and some of those things that create different challenges. The placemaking is an amazing success. It creates space for multi-generational interaction. I got great feedback from people in the elder community with their grandchildren, along with college people interacting, along with young professionals, just kind of everybody in one place, which is, which is the goal, which ties into the first line and being a better regional partner and more attractive to retaining students into the employment pipeline. So yes, you will see continuations of placemaking. It's gonna be a priority in East Lansing and you'll see multiple iterations of that around, be it parks, be it downtown, be it in the neighborhoods. A placemaking is here to stay in East Lansing.
All right. And then the next question is, with a large portion of the city population being students, how do you plan to include student voices going forward in matters of this thing?
Yeah, it's something I say often just out in the community and in general. Kinda, first and foremost, in any municipality, squeaky wheels get the grease. So always just know that your voice is heard, be it a phone call, an email. The process of hearing from you works. Every single one of your emails, every correspondence, everything is read and disseminated and talked about and debated. So just make sure if you want to be engaged, just engage directly. Secondly, just knowing that many boards and commissions here locally and regionally are open to you, even as students to participate. There is a great deal of political power and influence inside of many boards and commissions that are strictly volunteer level. So, you know, even though you're a college student and you're, you know, over here and you're busy, you can find boards and commissions that interest you or that align with your career path or anything like that. It's a great experience. And really shows you how the sausage is made, which is really kinda what matters sometimes, just knowing where to go, who to talk to and how to make that difference. And just know that East Lansing is open to student input. We're gonna need your ideas around, you know, how to move forward in the future, how to better partner in the neighborhoods between students and the full-time residents, just kinda everything. Your input is welcome. Is it always gonna win out? No. But it'll always be heard and we're here to listen to you and we'd love to partner with you. And if you find something creative, we're there for you.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. The data is definitely out on this. The more involved the student is while they're a student, often the more successful they are later on and often the community is better served for it. So the best we can do is work together to network to stay involved. I mean, I'm talking to a bunch of students right now who are clearly involved in what's going on around the city and what's going on in their school. And I love to see it. We just need to do a better job collecting more people because obviously there's a lot of empty seats in here right now, too. So like I said earlier, networks, job fairs, opportunities that can keep us all around here and even around the area where a couple of baseball throws away from downtown Lansing. There's plenty of opportunities all around us. Internships, local government positions, student involvement, postgraduate and as an active student.
And then next question is, this past spring, ASMSU worked with past Mayor Aaron Stevens and Councilwoman Watson on an ordinance that would push back the leasing period so students would have more time before signing a lease, also known as Ordinance 1500. This is a uniquely student issue. And we kinda just wanna get your thoughts and perspective on Ordinance 1500 and ordinances like that that are uniquely student issues within the city.
Okay, this is a good question, too, because these are the conversations we absolutely should be having. It's really important in a situation like this to look at it from both perspectives before you make decisions. So from the perspective of the landlord, this is their job and buying a house in the area is a major investment for them. And it's important that they take care of themselves and making a career. And then of course, from the perspective of the student, your privacy is key. It's fundamental and the more comfortable you are in the area, the better. So I obviously wasn't part of City Council when that vote went through, but I can't help but think if I was, I would have absolutely voted for Ordinance 1500. That 150-day window is, I mean, it's kind of key for yourselves, for your well-being, for your mental health and for your acclimation into student life.
On the question of Ordinance 1500, in the iteration, as it came forward and the timing, I was not in support of that iteration. And primarily because I think it's more of a regional issue. And it would have allowed separate municipalities to have influence and advantage over the small business owners who are the landlords or even small, single-house owners who are landlords. Not so much the big conglomerates or anything like that, but there are many small business owners who own a single house or a couple houses. And the housing market here is more regional than that, as we can see along Michigan Avenue. And, you know, Northern Tier and Bath and Township and beyond. You have to have a lot of coordination around any change in the housing rules. So I felt that was highly disadvantaged to the small business owners in East Lansing, frankly. But I think there's potential there. The timing inside of COVID, there's probably a lot of ordinances I would not have supported in COVID because I didn't believe in shifting and huge market shifts in the middle of a pandemic. And really disadvantaging people who had no sense of how the impact of the sophomore rule, the impact of new development to the east and to the west and just really getting a feel for the new marketplace. I think we'll have a new opportunity to look at it again based on new market conditions and new development. But I am in support of student housing. I'm in support of students having access and fair housing and fairness. But I'm also in support of small business environment and making sure we're creating fairness in the region, kind of across the board.
And then the next question is, what are your plans within the city to further DEI, so diversity, equity, inclusion programs and initiatives?
Yeah, this, this is something we had a lot of time to ruminate over. Obviously, we don't live in a vacuum. There was a great deal of things going around and around public safety, law enforcement, diversity, equity, inclusion as a nation. So we didn't shy away from that. East Lansing, we declared East Lansing an anti-racist city and inclusive city where everyone should feel welcome. We're a city of many firsts in the areas of diversity, equity, inclusion and in civil rights. So we don't, we never shy away from that reputation. Under our council, we installed the first director, Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion into that role and began a full cultural realignment of our staff and council with full diversity and equity training and bias training. Those are some huge things. We did, we did things inside of the code and along the ways of disturbing the peace that we thought were maybe not equitably being dispensed from a civil function. So there's just a lot of things. It's, as a city of East Lansing, we have, we have a long legacy of being on the right side of history. And I don't think with any council I'm a part of, we'll be leaving that legacy behind and we'll be advancing it. We'll be moving it forward, be more fair based on gender, sexuality, race. East Lansing's open to you and I want everyone to feel safe in living here.
Thank you. Yeah, he's absolutely right. I feel like East Lansing's usually pretty ahead of the curve when it comes to diversity. And I mean, I've said it before a few times and I'll say it again, the more diverse we are as a community, the stronger we are. And anybody who can't get behind that idea, I mean, I wouldn't go for them for City Council. And also, it's important to remember that I think people hear diversity and they only think race and it's a lot more than that, especially right now and especially among students. It's also diversity in gender identification and sexual orientation and language barriers. And it's incredibly important that we keep an open mind for everyone and that East Lansing stays a feels, stays feeling safe for all of its students and for all of its citizens and for all of its workers. And in terms of equity and inclusion, we can always be doing better. And I think a lot of us are doing a lot better. And what's important right now is for all of us to just be on the same page, for all of us to make each other feel comfortable and for all of us to work together to keep growing our opportunities.
Right. And the last, like written question, MSU is in the process of expanding their off-campus student contact procedures and guidelines and process. What are your thoughts on an off-campus conduct system being extended?
I mean, if we're doing it properly and justly, I'm all for, I haven't read enough on this issue, but I know any policies MSU would put out there are for the benefit of the students, for the safety of the students. And it's hard to kinda put a blanket statement on everything because every situation's gonna be different and every situation needs to be looked at differently and maybe even handled differently. So as long as the policies we're putting out there are pro-student, pro-community, pro-all-of-us, staying healthy, then I'm for it. Absolutely.
Yeah, as a, as a dad of two college students, public service announcement on this first part. MSU and the conduct stuff, MSU is your brand. And kinda the piece of paper that degrees written on is only as valuable as that brand. So the risk is with bad conduct, with bad actors and with the things that elevate themselves to national prominence, it diminishes the brand. I'll leave you with that one first. But as far as student conduct, it was much more important in the global pandemic, public health and safety, violence, you know, things like along that line. That's, that's a, that's a non-starter. That should be, you know, equally enforced on both sides of Grand River and in partnership with Michigan State. That's, that's a non-starter. Now, areas of noise and other complaints and violations and things that may rise to the level of further enforcement, I think that's a debatable question. And should that have impact on academics in other areas? I think that's a fair question to ask and should be debated and talked about. But I think most importantly is what we've done as a city, is trying to be more proactive with, with working with students, with our community officers and things like that. We know not every single issue is an issue of conduct. There's issues around just not understanding or knowing the rules. We've tried to be more proactive with putting our community officers, letting people know the rules ahead of time. If they still choose to make those options or make those choices, that's their decision. And then we've also installed two social workers because a lot of times, some of these issues are beyond simple issues of conduct. There may be other secondary health concerns or other things going on. So. Yeah, that's it.
So all the, oh god, those are all the prepared questions that we have. I don't know if you guys would both be comfortable if anyone in the audience had any questions, if you guys are good with that. So I don't know if anyone has any questions that they wanted to ask. I can hand you off the mic if you want. Oh, yep.
Both this year and two years ago, there have been rental scooters on MSU's campus. But I know those can often pose dangers for traffic fatalities. They can be used improperly. I'm curious how the city of East Lansing is working with, say, rental scooter companies or with maybe even just the traffic infrastructure to provide safety for students and people in the community.
Well, Councilman Bacon will be able to answer this question much better than me as he's currently, I'm sure, working with these companies. But yeah, I mean, the priority is always the safety of the student. I hate those scooters. I see them everywhere on the roads. But students like them, they're helpful. They're here to stay for now, I would guess. And going forward, I mean, it's, it's exactly questions like that that, that's gonna be discussed, that we're gonna talk about. And then when we get a majority opinion on something, we'll make the decisions.
Yeah, I think you can just assume regulations come into a scooter near you soon. There's, I think it's a great advent and a great asset. It also needs a little bit more alignment and, and causes tons of safety issues. It's one of the things we get quite a bit of correspondence around. And I think it went a little bit under the radar through the pandemic. The scooter business kinda started. Then there was, people weren't moving around. Now we're back mobile again. So it is time to relook at this issue. And I think we have the will on council right now to look at it and it comes up quite a bit in correspondence and in phone calls. So yeah, we will be looking at it, trying to create more safety. They're, they're dangerous. They're placed everywhere. So anyone who's listening can help us now by at least trying to put them away in an orderly fashion and kinda just not leaving them everywhere and, and being aware that you're on a motor vehicle when you're crossing through traffic or via intersections and that kinda thing. It could be a very tragic situation around the scooter. So yeah, something's coming and it is on our radar, so.
All right. Does anyone else have any question?
Hello? If elected or re-elected, I guess, what will you do to increase community trust and policing? And what policy options do you foresee assisting police community relations?
Great question. I think we've, we've done quite a bit around, around policing. We've been studying or, oh, they've been talking about for several years. We've been studying and looking at policing and the police relationships, any slancing and how to improve that for the last, almost a solid year now. And we just seeded our first inaugural Police Oversight Commission that'll handle complaints along with really studying best practices and looking at how to continue to improve that, that community relationship. We've also just really tried to improve on the reasons why we interact with police. If things aren't necessarily law enforcement related, that was the importance of getting social workers on board. Some things may be mental health related and not even, and our law enforcement officers aren't equipped to handle those types of issues. So we've tried to remove at least that element and then with the community officers, putting them out there to handle more issues around noise, around neighbor relations, around what's this party or whatever you're trying to do next and getting an instruction around that versus having that be a law enforcement encounter in the first place. So we're, some of this is protecting our law enforcement officers from unnecessary encounters that aren't necessarily inside of their training or preview. And then also educating the community around the best ways to interact and trying to head some of this stuff off at a community level. And we're also committed to increasing, enhancing community policing. I think I'm a student of the nineties in CJ, community policing was everything in that era. And we got into a little bit different, more militarized, more broken windows type policing over the years and it's kinda spiraled downhill. I think we're returning. And it's kind of spiraled downhill. I think we're returning to community-based policing. And I think that's the future. And that's what you're going to see. And I think people who even who are viewing law enforcement right now would be viewing it through the lens of community policing versus a more militaristic police model going forward.
Thank you. A really good question. And obviously a hop on topic for a lot of people right now. I was lucky enough last week to take, do a ride along with one of our ELPD officers and I was able to really get to know a couple of them and talk to them about the issues they have. And then I've also talked to students and residents about the issues they face with our local police officers. For the most part, East Lansing is a pretty great city when it comes to what we're able to produce with a pretty short staff ELPD department. Obviously, a big part of their job is policing around campus. And a priority for all of them is the safety of all of you guys, of all of us. So I mean, I, I, I was able to learn a lot of really interesting facts. The one officer who told, who drove me around said when he started at DLPD, there were sixty-eight uniformed officers. And since then, the population's grown and right now they're down to forty-eight uniformed police officers. So I don't know that we need to take away anything else from the ELPD. I know that they're doing the best they can. And for the most part, a great group of individuals. Forcing our, our laws around the city right now. And going forward, I mean, it's, we're, what we're doing, like, like the last question, we're doing it right now. We're having the conversations we need to have and we'll make the decisions going forward that, that the majority of people want us to make.
Is there any more questions? Anyone have any questions? I'm going to bring it with me this time. Who had questions? You want to, sorry, I lost.
Okay, so access to mental health resources is obviously a really important issue to students. And obviously the university, their own mental health resources and forms of support for students. But on city council, if elected or reelected, how do you expand access? To community mental health resources here in East Lansing?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think it's the, kind of the burning question. I think coming out of the pandemic, it's what's been exposed is a great deal of disparity. Not only in healthcare, but in mental health care and how those conditions tend to expose you and impact you more in the areas of mental health. We, we're just at the beginning with our, on the law enforcement side and placing social workers in there. I, I think it's going to be a priority as a region to find new partnerships and new places for people with all manner of mental health issues and condition. That's always been on our radar. I think there will be dollars around mental health and we'll apply them accordingly, be it state or federal dollars. And it's at the, it's at the top of our, of our mindset. We understand the devastation of, of mental health issues. And then combined in the community, particularly with issues of gun violence and other things. Typically there is an underlying mental health thing that goes along with that. So we're, we're not going to shy away from it. We will look for new partnerships and new areas of service to provide to the community and to students. And we'll continue to build that out with our, with our local partners here. And wherever we find dollars that directly apply to that, we will apply them and continue to grow in that area. And I'm not even particularly sure we're right-sized in our social work yet. That'll be determined as we reevaluate our numbers, along with law enforcement and the community officers, long-term.
Thank you. Again, great question. I studied both psychology and political science at Central and I'm a huge advocate for mental health. And like a lot of other issues, what really it all comes down to is money and how are we going to pay for it? Are we going to pay for us getting the help that we need? Luckily, like you said, MSU does a great job in providing opportunities for students who need to talk. Faculty members who can always help out. And moving forward, yeah, I mean, if there is ways to pay for it, it's a top priority for all of us that you guys have, great. Whatever you need, opportunities to come in, to talk to people, to. Feel safe and express yourself in ways that you can buy out of any mental health issues that you're having.
I was like, I know I saw a few more.
Hello. Can you guys hear me? Yeah, I was, one of the things you guys had mentioned was attracting recent graduates to stay or pretty much retain graduates of Michigan State University. Any slanting in the region beyond. What incentives would you offer? Well, one of the things that I've seen you guys have done is build place making spaces that really make the city very welcoming, especially the downtown area. But I believe it is missing some businesses or businesses that would support a recent graduate. How would you guys provide incentives when you're on the city council to have businesses, larger companies come to the city of East Lansing? Or support the other municipal, the city of Lansing or Lansing Township to bring those larger businesses into the region?
Yeah, great question. I mean, I would never tell a student not to take the best opportunity they have prevented. And they have offered to them, but what we can be doing is, and like I said earlier, literally, we're gonna, I'm going to try to host a job fair from the East Lansing businesses. That will cater directly to the students that want to stick around in this area. Obviously, we need people to stick around in this area. Hate to see all, every student leave as soon as they graduate. But also, like you said, we need more businesses in those downtown empty offices. It's, it's kind of just this nasty cycle that keeps going around. So what we can do is give incentives to companies. That'll give incentives to students that'll help break that cycle. And then hopefully, as we grow as a community and as a city, like we are growing right now, there'll just be handfuls of opportunities to, to come for everybody.
Yeah, I, I, obviously this is a really big regional question. When you're attempting to attract employers or large anchors or corporations, they always have a scorecard of why they come to that region. And I think a lot of this has to do with, as East Lansing and as a region fixing our scorecard. And that, that's around the broader issues of housing accessibility, of entertainment, of, like you said, of, of certain retail or certain things that support business or that are create vertical markets around that. I, I think we're committed to that, to doing some of that, be it the, the tech sector or other sectors. You, you have to be attractive on those scorecards, the type of people you're graduating. All those things matter. So I think that's going to require real broad coordination, all the way up to the Capitol, all the way down Michigan Avenue, all of East Lansing and Michigan State. I said regionally before to make sure that we're attractive to people who want to locate here, anchor here, live here, work here and that type of thing. So it's a, it's a big, big, broad question. I think we can kind of arrive there together. And like I said at the very beginning, I don't, I don't assume that the next big anchor, the next CEO or the next creator is not in this room or not on the stream or not in the school right now. We've seen it come right through our high schools. We've seen it come right through people who are on the top of the food chain, basically. So I, I assume those creators and those innovators are here. And given the opportunity to incubate and to grow, I think they will be the next great makers and creators for this region. So it's, it's multifaceted, but we can work together as a region and probably get these things done long-term. So.
All right. And then I see one more. Yeah, I have like two more questions. Did you have questions?
Hello, I wanted to ask, do you see any regulations for small businesses? Do you see any regulations to be problematic for small businesses or housing development? And if so, would you want to repeal them?
Yeah, good question. Sometimes in East Lansing, some of its perception. Sometimes our, it is our zoning or code or things like that are either too complicated or that were formerly complicated that have long been revised. We just haven't been our best advocates to the business community that some of these things no longer exist. It's a bit of reputation. I, I think that's probably my second only to housing, my second priority to make those redundancies and those types of things that make it very hard. Fee schedules and, and things along those lines, making it hard to do business, even things like parking, which was mentioned earlier. It's a good example of just trying to make it simple. In East Lansing, we need, we need to be easy to do business with. We need to get things down to, to a sheet of paper, clearly explains ordinance codes and how to work with us. And then when people want to work with us, we want to partner and not make it more difficult, but actually tell you how to partner with us and work within, within our structure. I think that's maybe been the missing piece. I think we've kind of put it out there, like if you want to work with us, figure it out kind of thing. I think that's, that's going away. I think everybody's eager to grow. I think spending time in a pandemic and not longer assuming that you have forever to get things done. I think the speed of government has picked up a little bit and we're eager to partner and eager to not make assumptions. One thing I'll always do, I'll never, you know, poo-poo experts. I'm always here for expertise and experts. And if you have expert opinions, we'll listen to them as a city.
Yeah, I think he hit the nail on the head. It's important for us or me as a potentially a city councilman, not to pretend to be the expert in every area, but to seek expert advice in these areas from a lot of great knowledgeable people around here that can help us out with these kind of problems. East Lansing for sure can be, and I'm sure will be doing a lot better job going forward and helping these small businesses grow. Like I said, I mean, we, we open up free parking to the public after five o'clock on weekends. For sure, that's a lot of money that'll, that's going to generate back into our economy. Less money for the government. Less money for East Lansing, but less money for East Lansing is okay when it means it's going to be more money for potentially small businesses in our area to blossom. And then that starts the working cycle once again.
Hi, if elected or reelected, what will you do to push for more environmentally sustainable policies?
That's a good question. And like I just said, far from an expert on environmental work, I know East Lansing does a lot in this area. So this is definitely one of those issues that when we can seek counsel as the city councilman, that's what we're going to do. And we're going to take the expert advice and then we're going to get opinions from our, the people who voted us in. And every, every, everything we can do to make sure that we're staying green and eco-friendly in East Lansing. It's a huge part of what makes our city valuable and why people are willing to pay that higher tax rate to live here.
Yeah, I, I think as, particularly as young people, you have every right to be wildly aggressive on this issue. I, I think this is, it impacts you in ways that many of us who have been here for a while and are a little bit older have yet to even see the impact we're seeing. Hundred years, thousand year storms and, and things that we've never even had concept of before. And obviously we were hoping these aren't here to stay. From a policy perspective, we will make policy decisions based on the environment, based on consultation with people who understand the environment. Engineers who want to, who want to build the right way and do things that will continue to protect the environment. I, I think the environment's front and center. I, I can, I could even say in the, in the past year. People are listening who probably never listened to these conversations before, because I think, you know, proof's in the pudding at this point that these environmental issues may be here to stay if we don't reverse course. So we're open. I'm always open, particularly from young people on issues of the environment. So I think it's acutely your issue, probably the issue of your generation to handle and to lead even my generation on. So the doors are open on this issue, particularly with experts and people who are studying issues around the environment. We need to hear from you. And anything we're doing around engineering, building, construction, needs to have environmental concepts ingrained in it. And we'd be having environmental conversations around it for every brick that we lay going forward. That's my approach to it.
Any more questions? I know that I had told the five-year candidates we'd start around like seven fifty. So I don't know if you guys want to do your closing statements. You guys each have one minute.
First and foremost, I want to thank Mikey for his time tonight and being here. And thank you all for attending tonight. I, I, clearly you can see from the conversation that as a city, no matter which way it goes, we're in good hands. And the people who do these roles, I think sometimes can appear like politics, but it's just mostly people who care about what's going on around them. I just want to reiterate, one of my earlier comments is squeaky wheel gets the grease and you can get involved at any level that you see fit, even as a student. Anytime you want to correspond, call, just walk in, make an appointment and talk about issues around the city and, and how things are going and how things could go and how things could be different. We're open. I think it's an era of ideas. And I think everybody's willing to listen to you regardless of age, regardless of station, regardless of whatever. I, I think ideas are going to win the day here. Most of the problems that you see in America or in communities right now are just people, some people have run out of ideas. So we are now leaning on you guys to be the next group who brings great ideas and helps us be a better community at large.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you guys for coming out. Hearing from students is an important part of this job. I, you guys are a pretty big part of what makes East Lansing great. Thank you for the people listening at home as well. Thank you for anybody who's given me words of encouragement, your phone calls, your emails. It's all appreciated. I got really lucky as I'm on this journey right now. Councilman Bacon's made it really easy for me to know that the event that I don't win, there's still going to be a good person, good people in office, setting up East Lansing for the future.
Thank you guys. And you guys can we thank you? Thank you. All right. And then I'm just going to give a few minutes to get like some water, go to the bathroom, go to the bathroom. We'll probably be back in like five-ish minutes with the five-year candidates. I'm going to get them set up here as well. Thank you. Um, thank you. Alrighty, um, so we're going to basic, I kind of explained it to you guys through email. You guys will have two minutes for opening statement, a minute and a half for like answering each of the questions. And then one minute at the end for opposing statement. Um, unfortunately we do have to use one mic, so I'm going to have you guys pass the mic back and forth. Um, we're going to kind of just go randomized for opening statements. I'm just going to go by alphabetical order by last name. So you'll go. And, and as I introduced the other people from like descending order, we have Adam Delay, Dana Watson, Dan Bowman, Chris B., and George Brookover. Um, and they are running for the four-year spots on council. So we can get started if you want to start whenever you're ready and I'll start the time.
Thank you. Thanks. Well, good evening and, and I'd like to thank the Associated Students of Michigan State University for hosting this debate forum this evening. My name is Daniel Bowman and I'm vying for one of the, one of the two four-year spots on the East Lansing City Council. About fourteen years ago, my wife Anne was offered an opportunity to teach here at um, at Michigan State in the Department of Pharmacology and Toxicology. Um, we had met when I was in grad school in Ann Arbor and I followed her to, to Georgia. And um, we lived there for about six years or seven, six, she was there for seven, I was there for six years. And I had a job that I really loved, a promising career. I was the manager of architecture and design for a traditional neighborhood development in North, North Augusta, South Carolina, just across the Savannah River from Augusta, Georgia. But we were going to buy a lot and we were going to, I was going to get to design our home. So it was like, you know, it was an architect's dream, but this, the opportunity to move back to Michigan where I grew up was one we just couldn't pass up on. And so I followed her back um with our, with our, at that time, our one-year-old daughter. And um, I started, uh, founded East Arbor Architecture, maybe about a year, two years after that. Um, but the following year, when we moved, we moved here in two thousand and seven, and then the following year, I started volunteering uh my time on behalf of the city. I've served six years on our historic district commission, including the last two years as the chair. And then it'll be six years on our planning commission this, this December, where I've served as the chair for four years. And so this effort to run for city council is not my sort of deciding in the last year, the last couple of years that I wanted to assist um, give my, bring my efforts to the benefit of the city. This is well over a decade of my service and sort of this is the next step I see in that, in that particular effort. Um, I've made it one of my aims throughout this particular campaign to um, I, I hope to maintain and to improve the relationship between the university and, and the city. And I'm going to hopefully um, over the next hour or so, convey to you some of my ideas in that particular regard.
And time.
Thank you.
And then.
Good evening. My name's George Brookover. Uh, I was born and raised in East Lansing. My father was a professor of education and sociology at Michigan State. My mother was a music teacher. I grew up across the street from the Brody dorms. Um, frankly, I escaped East Lansing, went to Cornell University undergrad and then the University of Michigan Law School. Been back here since I was in law school. I have a law practice on Abbott Road. During my law practice, I represented numerous students of various predicaments. Um, I've served on the East Lansing School Board, the East Lansing Planning Commission, the East Lansing Housing and Community Development Commission. And I'm running for city council because I think there's a feeling in the city and on campus that the city council has uh lost a vision of what East Lansing is. I tend to think East Lansing is a pretty unique um city. It's not Ann Arbor, thank goodness. Um, it's extremely unique. It's a world-class university. We have many, many, many programs overseas that have affected many, many, many people favorably. And that's part and parcel of Michigan State University. And so it's important that the city of East Lansing and the Michigan State University are truly integrated in terms of their goals and moving forward uh with the issues they're confronting all of us at this point. Thank you. If I went to Cornell, I don't exactly know the alphabet, so I'm just going to pass this down and let the next person.
Yeah. Sit down, yep, you're good, yep.
Good evening, go green. Uh, all right, there we go. I like that energy. Uh, my name is Adam Delay and I am running for a four-year seat here on the East Lansing uh city council. Uh, I originally grew up in the city of Romulus, um, which is down in the Detroit area, home of Detroit Metro Airport. So many of you have probably been there before. I came up about fifteen years ago uh to go to MSU uh from Romulus. And uh, after graduating, I uh double majored in uh uh journalism from the College of Communication Arts and Science, as well as social relations and policy from James Madison College. After graduating, my wife and I, or my girlfriend at the time, we wanted to stay in East Lansing, but we couldn't afford it. And that's one of the things that I really want to talk to you guys about this evening about uh the issues with the ability to stay after you graduate. The challenges that that presents. Uh, so we bounced around south side Lansing, then we moved over to the west side where I lived in Lansing Township for a couple of years. Uh, during that time, served on the uh Board of Trustees in Lansing Township. Uh, professionally, uh, after graduating, I worked in the state senate for four years. That led to a job with uh US Senator Debbie Stabenow, where I worked and she has an office here in East Lansing. Uh, and then that led to a job with Governor Whitmer, where I worked from when she first started uh right up until COVID nineteen broke out. And then they moved me over to the Department of Health and Human Services to help out with that response, uh, which has been fun, as you can imagine, and a lot of work. But uh, it's work that I'm proud to do and um, I'm running because I think that if you look at the last three, four, or five years, um, we have seen uh our country go in the wrong direction. And I think that even at a local level, there are things that we can do and changes that we can make, whether it be police reform, whether it be uh social justice issues that we can really um move the needle on. And we only get a chance to do that uh once in a generation. And one of the reasons I'm running is, is that I want to make sure that we don't waste that opportunity. Thank you.
All right, and then.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm Chuck Grigsby. I'm running for the four-year seat, one of the four open, uh, four-year seats. Just want to thank, thank you for having us here tonight to speak and listen and learn more about what's going on here in the MSU community. Um, some of you may know that I, I am on the Human Rights Commission for the City of East Lansing, I chair that. And I just got done doing uh a commission work with study on Independent Police Oversight Commission, which is a commission that was designed to help uh create police oversight in the city of East Lansing. So, so I've been busy here doing some different things. Um, I think I'm one of the only candidates that has really uh enmeshed themselves with the student body. I've marched with you during the summer. I've worked on some different initiatives that hopefully will be addressed, talked about as we go forward with uh our forum here tonight. I'm excited to be able to come over here and be a part of this community. The thing about East Lansing and MSU community, I really believe that the last few years, the two communities have kind of gotten a little bit separate from each other. And the pandemic was a great unfortunate excuse for us to kind of reestablish some of those relationships and really come together with public health. And I think we could expand upon that, um, and really work together. I mean, have really one community stand together here in the city of East Lansing. So thank you for your time tonight and I appreciate that and I'll pass it on to the next person.
Dana.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dana Watson. My pronouns are she/her and I'm African-American. I attended Michigan State University in the late nineteen nineties. I lived at Yackley Gilcrest at that time when it was the only all-female dormitory. I, by the time I was leaving Yackley Gilcrest, Gilcrest had been integrated and there were boys and girls on that side. Um, my senior year at Michigan State University, I ended up moving off campus. I lived in the city of Lansing downtown, um, because also it was unaffordable for me to live here in the city of East Lansing. I got a bachelor's degree in communication from Michigan State University and um went on to mostly work in nonprofits and now I work for the county government. I've worked for the county government since two thousand and nine began in our women's health clinic. And then currently I work in the maternal child health division as a health educator. I go out in the community and I work with people who are pregnant or have little babies and just talk about like the social determinants of health and how we can have healthy babies, healthy families and healthy communities. Some of the things that I value as a city councilperson is equitable practices, taking hard looks at our public safety and harm reduction, whether we're talking about noise pollution, our environment or our health, what we breathe in, um, where we can walk to and our stress levels. Those are some of the things that I care deeply about. I have three kids. I have a high schooler, a middle schooler and an elementary school child. I am a soccer mom when I am not trying to campaign or talk about city council issues. And I was appointed to East Lansing City Council fourteen months ago. And I, along with council member Ron Bacon, became the second and the third African-American city councilperson for the city of East Lansing and I hope to continue that. Thank you.
All right. Um, and then as the questions go on, the order is just randomized so that everyone has a chance to answer first, second, third, fourth and fifth. Um, so we can get into the first question. The first person that's going to answer this is George Brookover. Um, and so the first question is, should the city plan include strategies to retain students after graduation? How would you plan to do this? And you have a minute and a half to answer these.
Well, as I said in my opening statement, I think the city of East Lansing is a unique, unique city. So I think the reality is that we need to try to retain. We need to try to retain all generations, including students that they want to stay here. And I think part of that plan that we need to do is effective um zoning and planning. So we have housing opportunities for all generations. Um, a second thing that I think we need to keep in mind is that we need to have a habitable downtown, a convenient downtown, a walkable downtown in which all generations can access the downtown. Uh, that we have a multiplicity of um venues downtown, not just bars and restaurants, but stores like Target, things like that. So those would be the kinds of things I'd be trying to look at at the city council. I guess the answer to the question is, yeah, of course we want students to stay in East Lansing, but we want everybody else to stay in East Lansing.
And then I have um Adam Delay as the next question. Uh, Adam, yep.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I mean, absolutely. I agree as well. I think that we want to have a strategy in place that makes sure uh that students, when they graduate, if they want to stay here, like I did, like my wife did, and like so many of my friends did, um, that they have the ability to do so. The challenge um to me that comes with that is housing. Um, for those of you who live off campus, uh, you know, it's uh a thousand dollars at the minimum per month for you to be able to rent any of those apartment complexes downtown. And then when you graduate, you find that you can't find any uh rental properties here in the city of East Lansing that are going to be affordable for somebody just coming out of college. That was my experience and it took uh several years before uh my wife and I found that we were able to uh afford to get back into this community. And when I bought a home here, several of my friends who live outside the community said, wow, you got into East Lansing. That's awesome. You got into East Lansing, right? The idea that you could afford to finally get in, and that's not how a community should be perceived. And so what I think we need to have is uh, the key is housing and I would like to see a diversity of housing. More duplexes, more triplexes, not just single-family housing uh zoning where it makes it so that you can't gain access to some of these neighborhoods. Because not only um are we in a situation where it's only single-family houses that no one can afford coming out of college, uh, but you can't rent those houses either because the city has extremely restrictive overlay districts that say in this neighborhood, you can't have any expanded rentals. I'd like to open that up. Now, I understand that residents who live in these neighborhoods don't want to open it up to more uh student rentals, but I wanted to have the ability for those uh who graduate to be able to rent it.
Thank you. All right, and then Chuck Grisby, I have you next to speak.
Yes, um, I think it comes down to opportunity and affordability. Um, you know, for, to have talent stay here in the city, we need to have broad opportunity uh for that talent and make it affordable. Um, so I think we need to come together as a city with the community here in. So I think we need to come together as a city with the community here at MSU to be able to take that talent and be able to incentivize staying here. I don't think right now, with the way that we're set up, that very many people would like to stay here once they've graduated because there's a lot of opportunity throughout the nation. So we need to come together and work somehow to be able to bring some of the different things that you guys are focused on in your studies and create those opennessness of businesses, opportunity, education here in the community. So I really think it comes down to that. As some of the other candidates already talked about, the affordability of housing. It's very, very expensive right now, in my humble opinion, to live in East Lansing without having a lot of support mechanisms in place. And so when you're first starting off, in that first job, or having that first opportunity, while you have tons and tons of debt, it's almost unrealistic for this to be a viable option for you. So really, coming up with creative ways to maybe help students who want to stay here, who like this community, want to be here for a little bit longer, is what we need to be thinking about. And what we need to be having as far as a discussion with leadership here as well, to be able to come with maybe some businesses in a way that will provide that opportunity for you down the road. So, thank you.
All right, and then I have Dana Watson next to speak.
Hi. Prior to my appointment on city council, I also served on the Planning Commission. And so it was exciting to see businesses come through, like TechSmith or MSU-FCU, that wanted to choose to stay here and build to offer more employment opportunities for people. And I was also on the Human Rights Commission prior to my appointment. And also just valuing creating a welcoming committee, excuse me, community for all types of people that might want to stay here. And I know about the things that I think about when I think about living in a community. So yes, the kids, the students should be retained. And I also think about why I stayed. So I came from the Chicago South suburbs. And one of the reasons I chose to stay here is I saw diversity in the greater Lansing area. And also, I think it's pretty cool that it takes twenty minutes or less to get to a lot of places. I think it's cool that we don't have to pay that as much to park as we did like back home, like in Chicago. And I like the festivals, like the art festivals and the music festivals. And being a part of a community again where it's affordable, it's inexpensive, you can see people, you can meet people, I think that that's cool. And I think we should definitely work to retain the students and not just have a student-to-family type of dynamic here in East Lansing.
I'm sure it'll come as no surprise to those of you that have to find housing every year that, that the cost of housing is significantly higher than you might like. We've, the city has recently funded a housing study that has indicated that there's, there's some real desire to see something between that single-family detached owner-occupied house and that high-rise or mid-rise that we're seeing. And then those generally take the form of what we would call duplexes or duplexes, mansion apartments, or cottage, cottage courtyard arrangements, or even townhouses. So there's, there's actually, it appears that there's a demand for that sort of in-between, what we call the missing middle sort of housing in the city. And maybe that, our housing study will help to drive that a little bit. The problem right now is that, you know, sort of nationally, and there's some specific and kind of ugly examples here in East Lansing, where zoning has been used to encourage exclusivity in our neighborhoods. That's just a fact. It's not something we probably have to dwell on, but it's something we should probably keep in mind and, you know, in sort of in order to work against. And one of those things is a sort of the continuous reinforcement of single-family detached owner-occupied buildings. As an architect, I know there are ways, there are absolutely ways that we can be inclusive with our housing without having an effect on the character of these neighborhoods. And they're actually fairly straightforward. They're not permitted under our zoning currently, and it's something that I'd like to see. Maybe we could just unclench a little bit and see if we can't make room for some, you know, other people that maybe didn't have an opportunity to participate in our downtown neighborhood. And then finally, with that increase in.
Time.
Population, is that it?
Yeah. All right. I have Adam Delay answering this one first. Oh, okay. Can you hear, is this better for you? All right. All right. So there have been many opportunities and events to have students experience downtown this year. Other projects such as Albert El Fresco were taken down before students came back to campus. How do you see projects such as this one and others in the future, including student participation and getting students involved in the local economy?
Yeah, so I will tell you this. I am, when it comes to Albert El Fresco, I'm very passionate about this. I am the only candidate here that is advocating for opening Albert El Fresco back up, expanding in it, expanding it, investing in it heavily, and making it permanent. And I was disappointed in the city and the sort of mentality that the city took regarding Albert El Fresco, which was, we had it open up during the summer, and then we closed it right around the time the students got back. And what I heard from folks was sort of this air of, well, yeah, we had to do that, right? Because the students are coming back, we can't leave that open because the students are coming back. And there was this, to me, disrespectful tone about that. The students deserve to have an opportunity to take advantage of all the things that City of East Lansing residents do. And we talk, the city talks about saying, "We want to improve relations on each side of Grand River Avenue. We want to improve town-gown relations." So here comes an opportunity to build a community space, one of the most, I think, innovative things the city has done over the course of the last decade in the downtown area. And then, when the students came back, they said, "Sorry, we don't trust you." So if I am elected, as students, you're going to have the opportunity year-round to take advantage of that creative downtown space. I want to convert part of it into a green space, I want to plant trees, I trust you. If somebody breaks a connect four throughout there or steals some turf, you know what? I think that's, that's, that's not too much, you know, to ask, oh, okay. Well, and they brought it back, let's remember that. But you know, that's going to become, that's the cost of doing business. So I strongly support it.
Yeah. All right, and then I have Chuck Grisby next on the list.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we had the Albert El Fresco all summer long. And then, as we got to August, I did feel that it was cut off prematurely. But, you know, there were some good reasons for that. When you think about the city of East Lansing, you think about public safety, you think about our police force, and being able to have everyone be safe in an event, I think we need to work up to that where we have that year-round, to be honest with you. Because even with the format that we had, we had some problems that were happening late at night, some fights, some property damage, and different things. So it put a tremendous toll on our Public Safety Department to be able to manage that. And so that was something we did for the very first time as a city in a way that we opened up our community. And we just didn't have, in my opinion, have the resources to be able to provide something like that for the entire student body and what, forty-five thousand people that came back into our community all at once. But I do think, and I'm very supportive of doing things where we open things up for the MSU community, for the younger people out here, to be able to enjoy the city of East Lansing. So not that I don't want the Fresco situation to be open or closed when it comes to that. I really want it to be done the right way. In a way that, once we do get something up and running like that, it stays. It's part of what we're doing. So we need to work as a city, we need to work a little bit harder to be able to facilitate that for you in a way that's safe for all of you when it comes to something like that that we're doing for the very first time. Thank you.
All right, and then I have Dana Watson next.
I thought it was really cool to go downtown when everything was finally opening back up again to see families and students and people hanging out outside and just enjoying the businesses. And so there were really great things about that experience. But also, it, again, like other people have mentioned, some things changed as the night got later. And that puts pressure on our public safety officers. And so I think bringing in students and bringing in our public safety and hearing from the city about how we could possibly make it happen in a safer way where if there's stuff that's going down, it can get handled and that there's not too much pressure on our public safety officers or that they're prepared for that pressure. So I also think about the summertime, opening it back up. I think about our younger students, as I said, like, I have a sophomore. And so places where our high schoolers can go and hang out would be nice too. Because sometimes there's a lot of places that they can't go into. And I also think about special times, like maybe during the holidays, closing those streets down again and seeing how it goes from there.
All right, and then Dan Bowman.
I would submit that the reason that the El Fresco was so successful is because it was so rare. It was special. It was something that happened part of the year. And the rest of the year, it's, it's a street again. That, that I actually went on a ride along with Public Safety in August, and they took me to the, what I call the Vona, where El Fresco happens. And, you know, when, at the beginning of the shift, everything was sort of lovely. Families were there playing toss across and hopscotch. But it went at the end of the shift, and it was decidedly darker demeanor there, that somebody's growing up in the planters outside of Harpers. And, you know, it's my understanding that at the end of shift, the police department was stretched. Their, you know, their, their resources were stretched. Maybe it's something where if MSU police could participate, it might be something that could be done a little bit more frequently. I don't think it was done as a prejudice to the students. It was done, you know, as a public safety concern. There was a shooting there in August. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. And as far as making a quick change, I would caution, I think I'd know, you know, that I lived in Kalamazoo for a while, that's the home of the first pedestrian mall in the country. When I left there in ninety-five to return to graduate school, they actually opened up that portion of that pedestrian mall because they found it just didn't work for, for the location where it was located. And so if we're going to do a change, I would submit it's something we do gradually. Maybe we, you know, employ some sort of tactical urbanism and actually return it to the, to the Vona that it was intended to by the developer that, that initially proposed the development. Sort of it's something that's shared by pedestrians and bicycles and cars, and everybody has the sort of same weight. I don't know how that's done safely, but it is something that they do, the Dutch do it. There's no reason why we couldn't think about doing it as well. So I think it's a great thing to have happen. I, I think it should be extended so students can enjoy it as well, like any other of the benefits of the city.
All right, and George?
Well, I think I heard the question differently. I thought the question was talking about, in general, should we encourage opportunities to expand what I would refer to as multi-generational experiences in East Lansing? And my simple answer to that question is, of course. It's a multi-generational town. Students have been coming downtown for years and years and years. Students have lived in various neighborhoods for years and years and years and years. And students are part of that multi-generational mix. So when we do that multi-generational mix, we have to make it safe for people. We have to make it entertaining for people of all ages. And I think we should continue to explore those kinds of opportunities. Sometimes they work, and sometimes they don't work. And sometimes they're sort of in the middle. And so doing what we did this summer was an interesting experiment. There were some pluses and some minuses. But I'd like to look forward to what other kinds of things we can do together in the future in terms of those multi-generational experiences. Thank you.
And the first person that's going to answer this next question is Chuck Grisby. And the question is, with a large portion of the city's population being students, how do you plan to include student voices going forward in City Matters? How do you plan to include student voices going forward within the city?
Yeah, absolutely. Just stepping back a little bit, I mentioned that I was the Chair of HRC, which is the Human Rights Commission here in the city of East Lansing. When the opening came up on our commission, for us to have volunteer commissioners come on board, I really thought it was very important for us to have MSU voice on our commission. So as the Chair, I was part of the recruiting process of bringing on an MSU student to have a voice on our commission, which was very important and very valuable to our perspective as a city. That's one example of what I've done and been a part of, to bring the voices of MSU to the city of East Lansing. As you know, earlier I told you, I was out there this summer in the streets of East Lansing, marching with some of you there on some very important issues that were effective, affecting you here at MSU with some of the different things that were going on in the campus area with some discriminatory behaviors that were racially aligned with some different things that were making people uncomfortable. We also were involved with really coming to terms with the biases that we have coming in as people to the community and really make some changes with that here on the campus of MSU. And then finally, that march was really designed to also address the complaint process that when a student comes and makes a complaint in relation to something that they experienced here in a negative way, that that process doesn't revictimize the student. So that's an example of how you bring the voices together. You find out and listen to what some of the issues are, and you bring that forward. And those are the examples that I have, that I've been a part of, that I plan on continuing on as your next council member for the MSU and the city of East Lansing. Thank you.
All right, and then Dana Watson. Can you repeat the question, please? Yeah, of course. With a large portion of the city population being students, how do you plan to include student voices going forward within the city?
I've learned on city council that actually one of my favorite groups of people to communicate with was ASMSU. But hearing the student perspective and understanding how ASMSU represents student perspectives and what our students have gone through or going through is something that I value. We have a university commission that slowed down, kind of to a stop during the epidemic. But I look forward to keeping in contact with the University Student Commission. And also, as Mr. Grisby was talking about, the Human Rights Commission. When I served on the Human Rights Commission, which was my first commission with the city of East Lansing, I was accustomed to working with students and hearing student representation and student voice. I am also in the Bailey neighborhood. The Bailey neighborhood is special because there's a lot of students in our neighborhood. And there's sometimes conversations about who belongs to a neighborhood association and like who does not. And it's interesting to be in a neighborhood, lots of renters, lots of student representation. And so I ask questions about reaching out to the students as well and how we include the students and the renters as well in our process. Because you all are really important. It's been exciting to see you all come back since the epidemic. And it's unfortunate when the summertime happens and the students are gone again. Thank you.
All right, and then Dan Bowman.
As I mentioned, that one of my, my three aims is to, is to maintain and to improve the relationship between the university and the, and the city. The city is, the university is absolutely instrumental in the identity of the city. And I think that that's, that bond needs to be maintained. I've reached out very briefly to the government and community awareness group here on campus just to sort of throw about some ideas about how we could connect better once things clear a bit. The person I spoke with seemed to think that the new president would be amenable to that, that level of outreach. But almost, but more immediately, I would encourage all of you, do this tomorrow. We have a number of vacancies on our boards and commissions that need to be filled. That during my six years on the, on the Planning Commission, there's three different individuals that I think they were urban planning or maybe a landscape architect student that participated. Now, they didn't serve a full year. They basically, I think that they basically rounded out their senior year. But they brought a, an informed and interested, eager opportunity to share their thoughts about urban planning with, with the city. And ultimately, that, you know, they worked to advise the city council regarding decisions made by, by the, ultimately, in this case, the Planning Commission. The, we have students frequently speak out at Planning Commission meetings. And in fact, I met a couple of gentlemen at the farmer's market this past weekend called, they're probably, they're organization Uniservices. They're basically trying to provide leafraking and cleanup and that sort of thing, trying to, again, they're just trying to basically reach across Grand River, you know, in a way that I'd like to think Grand River, the folks of East Lansing, reach back, back to the south. I would encourage you to consider truly, tomorrow, take a look and see what boards and commissions have vacancies. And if there's something that strikes your fancy, something you're interested in, sign up.
All right, and then George Brookover.
Excuse me. If I was on the city council, I'd do three things to encourage student participation. Number one, as I have for the last thirty-five years, I'd be involved in student registration to vote. Vote. That's the best way to be involved. Number two, I would try to ensure that at least. Number two, I would try to ensure that at least on our boards and commissions and other kinds of committees, that we have student representation, not necessarily through ASMSU. Because with all due respect, ASMSU, everybody in this room that's a student knows that ASMSU doesn't typically represent all students. A lot of students don't even involve themselves in ASMSU. So there has to be a reach out to other areas of the campus. And number three, one of the things that's bugged me for years in East Lansing is the city government has this incredible, astonishing resource in departments at Michigan State University. And so I'm always intrigued when we go and hire some independent think tank at $50,000 or $75,000 a job to study something that we could probably make a few phone calls to a couple of departments at Michigan State University, get a couple of professors who would love to have like 10 or 12 or 14 of you help him or help her on some kind of a study, probably not charge us much money at all, and have as good or better a result because A, you know the town, you've lived here, and B, you're involved in an academic discipline at that point in time that's studying the precise thing that the city is. Thank you.
All right, and then Adam.
It's hard to go last because you hear so many good ideas. But I do agree with a lot of what I heard. You know, I think we have a lot of boards and commissions here, including a university, a city commission that we, I would encourage all of you to get involved with, you know. But I also think that it's a two-way street. You know, we ask, how can the students get more involved in city government? But how can we, as a city government, get more involved in what's going on with students? And so, for example, I did a Ask Me Anything on Reddit last week. And what, I got questions where it was something that, you know, a city government would have no role in playing, but it's issues that are affecting you guys, right? You have a massive employment shortage where cafeterias are shutting down. Now granted, the city can't fix that for you, but why can't we advocate to the university that you need to pay part-time student workers what they're worth, and then you will get them to sign up, and then you will get your cafeterias back open? I hear concerns from students who talk about the fact that they have issues and concerns with the university's management of their coronavirus policy. That is something that affects both sides of Grand River. Because if there is an issue with how the university is handling its policy, that is going to affect life here in East Lansing as well, across Grand River. So while I agree with everything I heard that talked about, you know, we want you guys to be engaged with us. You want, I want you to come to city council meetings. I want you to yell at me when I do something that you don't like. But at the same time, I also want to be an advocate for you. I don't care if you live on campus or where you live. If you live in East Lansing, you're a resident of the city, you're a constituent, and I'm going to do whatever I can, whether it's the bully pulpit or former or in former power to advocate for you guys.
All right, and the next, the first person that's going to answer this next question is Dana Watson. And the question is, this past spring, ASMSU worked with former Mayor Aaron Stevens and Councilwoman Watson on an ordinance that would push back the leasing period so students would have more time before signing a lease. This is a uniquely student issue. What are your thoughts on an ordinance like this and other ordinances that are uniquely student issues?
So, two things I decided I really wanted to focus on when I talked about Ordinance 1500 today. And that is, there's nothing that I can think of that we get access to about nine months after we've signed on legally to do it. And to create this system where landlords are able to have students do this is, it's detrimental to us trying to move in different types of people into the community. I've talked about before, when I was looking for an apartment to rent with my three kids, I found one place, and it was very hard. When people are looking for a place to rent, they're not always looking for it for nine months down the line. And so it blocks people out, this system. But also, it cages students in where you don't cage anyone else in. You don't have to wait that long to get a car after you've signed on for a car loan. You don't have to wait that long for a refrigerator. We shouldn't do it to the students. And they should have choices, just like any other adult, with an appropriate timeframe. And something else that stood out for me during the discussions about Ordinance 1500 was people's personal experiences, which existed. I think there's a huge underground subleasing going on, and that is because of the inflexibility and the stuff that goes down those nine months before you move in with that person or those persons. And it's okay for life to change. And we should have systems set up where our students and people that support our students aren't screwed over. Thank you.
All right, and next person is Dan Bowman.
Thanks. I'm taking a decidedly different tack on this. And I'm fully sympathetic with the idea that you wanted to, many of you probably wanted to break leases because you were probably not occupying the spaces that you were renting. But I was really uncomfortable with the way that the ordinance was drafted and that required concurrence of what we called the shoulder communities or different jurisdictions in order to actually put it into place. And, and that it was copied from an ordinance in Ann Arbor without any, to my knowledge, any indicated sort of effectiveness of that particular ordinance. I know this probably doesn't strike you as particularly welcome news. I, when I had a meeting with Ellie and with Kayla, I knew full well that I had to let them know where I stood on this, and I want you to know as well. One of the things that the housing study that the city has, has arranged for has shown us is that we're likely looking at a significant increase in supply of rental housing. And I suspect if you look up in down Grand River, you know, or in Michigan Avenue, you're going to, you're going to be aware of that fact. And that, so the choices are going to be much, much greater for you and for other people looking for rent, for rental properties. I can't speak for the prices, but the idea, of course, is when supply goes up, there tends to be a downward pressure on the overall price. And so I guess we'll see how that plays itself out. I did tell Kayla and Ellie that if you want to keep this on your agenda, do that. But continue to gather data that you can use in support of your arguments. Is something that's, where there's objective reasoning behind the decisions that I would be asked to make as a member of council, that there's going to have an awful lot more weight than, with all due respect, with the stories. In fact, stories can be, can become data as well, right? Collect that information about relationships and so on.
Thank you. All right, and then George Brookover.
Well, once again, I heard the question differently. I guess I heard really two questions. One implicitly was, if you've been on the council, would you have supported Ordinance 1500? And the answer is no. The second part of that question is, well, how do you feel about, I think it was, uniquely student issues in terms of legislation? And I, I guess I feel the same way about this that I tried to echo throughout my comments tonight. I don't think we should be creating legislation. In my business, we call it special legislation. I'm not even sure it's legal or constitutional in Michigan, but to benefit or detriment a specific group. I think we have to be careful about the legislation we pass. And I sometimes think that we already have legislation on the books that'll take care of many of these issues. One example of that is that over the course of 20 or 30 years since I was on the planning commission, we've instituted very rigorous lease requirements on landlords that didn't used to exist. I have a case in my office right now in which three female renters essentially were victimized by their landlord. And they have options. We're going to sue them. So there are options out there for people to do the wrong thing, and we have legislation that's already in existence. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then Adam Delay.
Thank you. Sure hand. How many people here live off-campus in apartments? Okay, I see you. So I probably had the most recent experience living off-campus back way back in 2009, which is ancient history, I know to some. But, so here's the thing, you haven't even finished unpacking your apartment yet, and your landlord calls and says, I want to show your apartment to somebody who's going to rent it out like 11, 13 months from now. Oh, by the way, I understand that you've just finished putting up your Kenneth Walker III poster. And, but here's the thing, are you going to be here next year? I need to know now. If you don't tell me within a week that you're going to be here next year, you're going to lose out. I understand you're a junior, and maybe it's getting along with your, maybe you're not getting along with your roommate, or you are. But you need to tell me right now. And it's absolutely unfair, it's absurd, and I would have strongly supported Ordinance 1500. I think it should not take a lawsuit in order for students on campus to have housing rights. It is absolutely a racket, what landlord, the large-scale landlords are doing. I'm sorry, I'm not voting no on this ordinance just because I don't want, like, I don't feel sorry for DTN, okay? When it comes to our rental properties on campus. You guys deserve the ability to get in, to live, to see what you want to do. Because I've been there where you are, back in, where it comes to August, and it's a madhouse. And there's 400 people outside of the leasing office trying to scramble to figure out where you want to live a year from now. And we talk about wanting to keep the students on campus. How are we going to keep, or keep them in East Lansing after they graduate? How are we going to keep you in East Lansing after you graduate if we're not letting you figure out where you want to, if we're telling you you have to figure out a year in advance before you even know you want to stay in East Lansing, where you're going to live? So I strongly support student housing rights.
Thank you. All right, and then Chuck Grisby.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, to answer that question simply, I don't know. I wasn't on council. But, you know, I listened to the council meeting, and I heard several young people call in and talk about their experience and talk about the harm that is happening with not being able to have the ability to make choices about where you're going to live, when you're going to live in the places that you guys are renting out. So for me, I definitely would like to come to a solution together with the landlords of city of East Lansing and the student bodies that's renting these houses, and sit down and come up with the way that we could all coexist together with our decision. Because it's a very complicated one on both sides of it. It's not going to be a simple and perfect solution on the outcome. But we can work together to come up with an outcome that we all can live with and evolve as we go forward. So that's my answer to that question.
Thank you. And Dan Bowman's going to be the first one to answer this next question. So what are your plans within the city to further DEI, so diversity, equity, inclusion programs and initiatives?
Sure. So I actually touched on this a little bit earlier. So I'll start with a story that, that of a project that I'm working on in Lansing. A gentleman by the name of Michael McPiscik, who runs an organization called the Mikey 23 Foundation in memory of his son who was killed in handgun violence. And I met him in December 2019, and we tried to, and he actually is involved in restoring and renovating homes for people in need of housing. And I reached out to him in 2019. And of course, through the pandemic of last year, we finally, finally, this past spring, found an opportunity to, to connect. And so we've, I've done some work with his, with his foundation in teaching some of his students. Well, I don't teach building trades, of course, but the sort of the start of the building trades. We map out the different houses and talk about how they can ultimately improve them. They're actually working on a property. I want to say it's in Leslie Street right now in Lansing. But bringing it back, so that's my sort of, it takes a long time ultimately to make connections like that. And now I've got an opportunity to continue work with him. This is, of course, in Lansing. I talked a little bit earlier about the exclusionary zoning that we have, again, throughout this, throughout the, the country. But most, most germane for our topic here is in East Lansing. And that there is, again, we have an unfortunate history of it, and it's just a reality. But I think that there are ways around, around to work with that in order to include more people, to make our, make our neighborhoods more inclusive and less exclusive, and trying to bring more people into our neighborhoods of varying, of varying incomes and varying backgrounds. And part of that requires that we're going to have.
All right, George Brookover is next. Yeah, no, you're good. So what are your plans within the city to further DEI programs, so diversity, equity, and inclusion programs and initiatives?
Rigorous enforcement of our human rights ordinances, continuing vigilance towards police interaction with minorities, and increased attention to availability of housing for all economic groups.
All right, and then I have Adam Delay next.
Yeah, you know, one, one name I want to mention is that of Elaine Hardy, which is the city's DEI coordinator. And that is a relatively new position and was elevated to a department level recently. So I think the city of East Lansing is doing some good things on that front. I want to continue to expand it. And I think Dan is absolutely right, that zoning is a part of this, that, again, it gets back to housing, where, you know, it's difficult to create a diverse and inclusive community when the folks that you want in that community to live here can't. And so I think that that is a piece of it, continuing to expand our programs. I heard someone mention policing. I have a proposal to reinvest 25% of the East Lansing Police Department's budget into a new department that I would call the Community Services Department. The goal of that department would be to focus on social issues involving poverty, homelessness. But I also think can be expanded in scope to make sure that when it comes to either discriminatory practices or enforcement of our, you know, our existing ordinances, that they can play a role in trying to assist with and build the community that we want to be, but that unfortunately, we don't always live up to being. And so I think that that's a couple of things that you can do to not just sort of, you know, say, because I think all of us talk about DEI, we talk about diversity, we talk about these things, but maybe some concrete things that we can do to make that vision a reality.
Perfect. And then I have Chuck Grisby next to speak.
Unfortunately, I'm going to have to ask you to repeat that so I don't go off on a tangent, because I will do that.
You are all good. What are your plans within the city to further DEI, so diversity, equity, inclusion programs and initiatives?
Yeah, that's a loaded question and the time allotted. I will talk about the work that I've been a part of, which is very important to me, obviously, being on the Human Rights Commission and really addressing some of our public safety challenges that we have and where it has been affecting people of color in a disproportionate way. And those people of color also exist on the MSU campus as well. And so really, looking at issues like that and evolving from that and really taking part in being able to have the equity in our public safety department. I did sit down with the MSU Police Department individually, pre-pandemic, before we had all the different things going on. I really was wanting to understand how they were doing community policing on campus and off campus. And we really had some great discussions about how we all can improve with that community policing. And unfortunately, we had the pandemic and some other things come up where we weren't able to continue that conversation yet. But really, understanding what the policies and practices that are being put in place are very, very important to be able to speak on them. One of the other things I'm very proud of, I think I was the very first person, as a person, called city council and asked them about racism as a public health issue and really had that be something that was going to be effective here in the city of East Lansing. And ultimately, we did some work on the Human Rights Commission and supported that and sent it up to council, and then they made a great decision to implement that ordinance or that resolution for the city of East Lansing, which is also effective here. There were some troubling issues. Oh, man. I told you I could go on a rant to that one. So, thank you.
All right, and then Dana.
Thank you. My response is going to be kind of similar to Mr. Grisby's in talking about what I've done. Equity practices and social justice is one of my passions. And maybe it's because I'm black, maybe it's because my pronouns are she/her, but I also think it's because of my children. And just wanting a better world, a better city, a better nation for where they are growing up in and understanding where I can influence that. And so I was also involved with declaring racism as a public health crisis on the city of East Lansing level, and also in discussions on the county level, those initial discussions. But other things that I've done, I ended up making East Lansing Info early into my appointment. And I think one of the titles was that we had freed the nipple. But what that had to do with was people with mammary glands being charged fees for lifting up bar tops as opposed to people without. And everybody has nipples. And so equitable practices is along those lines of what I think about, too. Something else I've seen that we're talking about is the tampon taxes. And so uterus owners should not have to pay extra prices because we bleed on a monthly basis. We should have those taxes eliminated. And other work that I've done, excuse me, oh. We've been talking recently about the Crown Act on the city council level. And I know that it's something that the students have been talking about as well. And so keeping my ears open and looking for those opportunities where I can discuss diversity, equity, and inclusion, where I can make sure it's something that's on our minds on a council level on a citizen level is something that I value. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then I just have one last question for you guys, and George Bookover is going to answer this one first. So MSU is in the process of rolling out student or off-campus student conduct procedures and guidelines. What are your thoughts on an off-campus conduct system, and how do you plan to like work with the university in establishing these?
I don't plan on working with the university on an off-campus student code. I don't think that's the place for the university. So I'm not aware of that, and I am in principle against that. I don't think the university has the right to police students who live off campus.
All right, and then Adam Delay.
Yeah, you know, I think that, you know, I hear what George is saying there, because to me, there are certain things that if you're, you know, if you're living off campus or engaging in activity off campus, that isn't any of the university's business. You know, if if there's a serious, whether it be violent or otherwise offense that occurs, then in that case, there may be some on-campus repercussions that would need to occur in the event of a serious thing. But, you know, if you get an M I P, that's, that's not the university's business. Go take care of it, you know, take care of it. You know, again, to me, it's one of those things where, you know, as a student, you're a student, yes, but you also live here as a member of our community. And so if it would almost be the same as something saying, you know, I engage in some certain sort of behavior, so now we're going to notify your employer. And, you know, if I, to me, you know, as a, that's, you shouldn't have to notify my employer unless it's something really, really, really bad. And so I view it as very similar here. I think so. Again, I would say there may be certain things that the university needs to be made aware of, and that there'd be action that occurs both in the city and on campus, but for a lot of different things, like George said, I just don't think that that's something that should be within the university's reach.
All right, and then Chuck Grisby. Yeah, of course. So MSU is in the process of rolling out off-campus student conduct procedures and guidelines. So what are your thoughts on an off-campus conduct system, and like, how would you work with the university?
Yeah. Yes, I think there should be some type of measure of conduct as you carry yourself as a human being in any community. How much that and how far that goes, I'm not quite sure. What I can speak to, which I think I understand, if I understand the question correctly, is being able to have a city that is able to have you have an opportunity to be who you are as a person. And one of the things that I've worked on was the disorientary conduct here in the city of East Lansing, which is a very complicated thing it turned out to be, because it took hours and hours and hours of work to get it right. But it really was, I think, what Ms. Watson was talking about, it really allowed us to be able to have ordinance out there that really wasn't disproportionately affecting you in a negative way when it comes to how you carry yourself out in the community. So for me, I think things like that are very, very important to have as a foundational piece for you to be out in the community and how you conduct yourself. But as a body, it's really hard to police behavior. Everyone's unique individuals to who they are and how they carry themselves, and we just got to be really, really careful and really open up the discussion with everyone that's involved at the table to be able to come up with something that is we all can live with going forward. Thank you.
All right, and then Dana Watson.
Okay, so when I think about off-campus behaviors, I think about during the epidemic when there were the parties going on and people were mask-free and we were not vaccinated yet. And it was a public health issue, but also like, that's a problem. And being able to loop it back to why those people were here in the city of East Lansing was helpful in curving some behaviors. And so I haven't had a look at the off-campus procedure, but I see it as like a three sixty experience of we are in a relationship with Michigan State University. We are in a relationship with the students, and so students are here for their education, and so when there's something that's going down on the city side, I think that that circular action is something to take a look at, and it's good to have conversations about it.
Dan Bowman.
The one thing I can't abide is is folks who choose to live in in East Lansing, as as we did, and we live pretty close to, we live in the Bailey neighborhood. We live pretty close to the student rental, like, there's one right across the street from us, and the the character changes the immediate block immediately south to us. Move to East Lansing and then immediately start to bemoan the fact that there's, goodness, there's students here. I mean, in my, to my, we knew where we were getting to, where we were going to, we were going to move here. We knew that there was going to be some urban drama periodically, and usually it manifests itself in a two A M, somebody going woo-hoo, or sometimes I'll find a beer bottle on my lawn. But ultimately, I find that the students are, you know, that provide a certain vitality, that sort of, we've got amenities in this city that we wouldn't have if we didn't have a, you know, sort of a population that's that increases the size of our city by basically, you know, half again. Like, more than I'm Watson, I'm not familiar with the code language as it's been as it's been structured, but if it's something where students are going to be asked to sign an agreement, I guess that's up to you to ultimately determine whether you want to do that. I'll note that when I went on the ride along with with public safety, the the primary issue that, or the primary concern was that there was a noise complaint. And so when when things get out of hand, public safety gets brought in. It's not, it's no longer something where where some sort of official code that you've signed off on presumably is going to guide your actions. It's, you know, you're going to probably have to meet with the public safety officer and rectify the situation.
All right, and, oh, perfect. I was just about to call them. All right. And because I did say nine o'clock for the candidates, and I know that some people have like families and children that they have to get back to, we can do closing statements. If anyone has any questions that they would like to ask the candidates, I can have you come up, like, come up after. If you want to, like, write down the question, then maybe I could send it to you guys, and then I can get back to you. That would be an okay way of doing it. So we'll just go in opposite order of opening statements with a closing one, so these you have one minute. And Dana Watson can go first for this one.
Thank you for allowing us to come here and speak with you all. I hope it's been a helpful conversation as you make your decisions about the two candidates that you would pick for the four-year term. I have enjoyed, as I've said, on city council, working with the students, and I just also enjoy living in East Lansing and the excitement when the students come back and football days and et cetera, et cetera. Some of the things that I care about, again, on those smaller levels, also include like parking tickets and prices for mopeds and safe areas for us to walk or for us to do sports in our community. And so just again, it's been a pleasure being here. My website is checkdana watson dot com. And if you have any questions, please continue your conversations always with city council or always with those commissions. We are listening, and I'm encouraged to also reach out more and more to the students to get student perspective. Whenever groups are impacted, I think they should all be at the table. And sometimes we forget about all the people that should have been invited. But again, thank you, and go green.
All right, and then Chuck Grisby.
Yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity for me to speak with you this evening. I'm very proud of the relationships that I've built up with a lot of the students here at MSU with some of the work we've been doing in the community. I hope to continue that at the council level with you. I really love the energy that the students brought to our community, bring to our community on a consistent basis every year as we have our turnaround in fall. You know, as someone who lives here in East Lansing, you know, I have students who live right next door to me in a rental, and I always look forward to that energy that comes into the neighborhood and just the excitement of football games, excitement of the basketball games and sports, and the extracurricular activities with art, music, and all the different things, you know, as I think someone said, three fifths of our population. And I really think that East Lansing has a great opportunity to evolve and adopt some things that's on your mind, some passions that you have, some dreams, things that you want to see, and an outlet to be able to kind of nurture those things in our community. So I look forward to really opening up that relationship, the conversation, and the dialogue with you as we go forward. Thank you so much.
All right, and then Adam.
All right, thanks to Eli and ASMSU for hosting tonight. I'll go through the contact info real quick. AdamDelay.com, the email is votelay@gmail.com, the phone number, seven three four five five eight zero one seven nine. Feel free to reach out to me anytime, two A M, that's fine. I want to be available to you as a councilman, but if you can do it later, that's so, you know, what I would say is, is I have worked for politicians my entire professional career. And over that time, I've learned how to not answer questions, how to evade things, and how to dodge issues and not take concrete policy chances. And I told myself that if I ever ran for something, that I wouldn't do that. So one of the things I want to do as a candidate is let you know how I feel. I want to reinvest twenty-five percent of our police department budget into a new community services department. I want to close our seventy-two-hour lockup, our city jail, and then reinvest that money back into the community. I want to cut our Freedom of Information Act fees by fifty percent so that folks, journalism majors, if you're in here, you know, should care, to make it easier to get information. And so if you ask me a question, how do I feel about this ordinance? How do I feel about that? I'm going to tell you how I feel. I'm not going to say we need to wait and see, or it's a balancing act. And that's how I want to be as your member of city council, because I want to be your member of city council. As students, you live in this community, and it's important for you to be engaged with us, but also for us to be engaged with you. As I said earlier, it's a two-way street. Last thing I'll say real quick, Brody Hall, you can go to Brody Hall, and you can vote anytime, nine to five, Monday through Friday. You can go in, update your registration, they'll give you the absentee ballot, so you don't have to wait until November second. Get into Brody. I checked a while ago, and the only person who lives on campus who has voted so far is President Stanley. So get out there.
All right, and then George Bookover.
Well, I began, I began tonight emphasizing that I thought the city of East Lansing was unique. And you don't have to look very far tonight to see the evidence of that. You can see the candidates, diverse group of people, came from different places. I look out in the room, I see all of you, well, not all of you, but some of you are here. And of course, I can't see the TV audience, but look around, a whole lot of different kinds of people. Look, when you got different people in a community, there's going to be conflict, and there's going to be, and there's going to have to be compromise. And I believe this is a unique town. I think all of those things are unique. I think they're good, that we're different, and that there are different pressures and different economic pressures, and that the elephant is over here on this side of the river deciding, I guess, that you guys have to have a code of conduct on the other side of the river. But the reality is, I believe in East Lansing, and I think we need to continue to work together to solve the problems that confront us. Thank you.
All right, and then lastly, Dan Bowman.
I mentioned in my introductory statement that one of my aims throughout this campaign has been to try to maintain and strengthen the the connection between East Lansing and Michigan State University, and I've told you that I have twelve years of experience as a volunteer on behalf of the city, but what I didn't get a chance to talk about is my volunteer efforts on behalf on behalf of MSU. I've served on a landscape architecture jury in the College of Planning, Design, and Construction. I've actually been hired as an adjunct instructor in the construction management program for a couple of different classes, though not for the last several semesters. And then probably the most rewarding opportunity I've had is to mentor two interior design students two different semesters as part of their their senior project. So I've had the opportunity to to reach out, you know, sort of me reaching out across Grand River, and I'm hoping that that throughout, if I'm, if I get your support in the next four, for the next election and get to serve for the next four years, and I do hope I do get that support, that I'll ask you all to to reach back across Grand River to the north and find ways that you can assist with the with the way things work in East Lansing, whether it's sort of just social issues or if it's something where we actually take an active role in in our governmental boards and commissions. I will presume that that our contact information is going to be made available generally, and so I won't take time with that. Thanks.
All right, thank you, guys. I really appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Applause for the candidates. And then just last minute things for the audience. Like I said at the beginning, if you are not registered to vote in the city of East Lansing, Matt right there, who's holding up the clipboard, has put a registration form. So if you want to register to vote and vote in this local election, you can go up to him and he'll give you one, and we'll turn it in for you, so you don't have to worry about any of that. If you guys have any questions about any of the contact information, I have it for you, so you can come up and talk to me. I'll be here for probably another like ten or so minutes. So anything else, you can, thank you, guys, and I hope everyone has a good night.